I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Very good, can we take the roll? Wait, am I supposed to call the roll? See, I'm the vice chair, so I only get to do this once in my whole career. Where's my roll list? Give me a minute.
Chairman, if I may, we just need a motion to excuse Patrick Bray from tonight's meeting.
Can I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Bray?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we excuse Commissioner Bray from this evening.
I second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Do I get to hit the gavel when I say that? Okay. Minutes, minutes next? Minutes have been sent to us. Do we have any discussion on the minutes?
No.
No? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meetings of May 17.
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from last meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Now is the time for any citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on a non-agenda item. Do we have any speaker cards for that? I do have a couple cards, but I think these are agenda items, right? So is there anyone who wants to speak about an item that's not on our agenda? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on. Disclosure of ex parte communications, does any member need to disclose any communications?
No.
No? Very good. Item seven, old business, we have no old business. Item eight, new business. I will open the public hearing, I get to hit the gavel now, don't I? Nope?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, for just one second, can we respectfully ask your indulgence in reordering the agenda just a little bit?
Absolutely.
Item number 8.2, we would request that the commission would reorder that till after our development applications tonight, that way we're not inconveniencing any of our guests that are here that may be interested in speaking. And so we would just respectfully ask the commission would push that agenda item to after 8.5, so it would be the new 8.6.
Do I need a motion to do that, or can we just?
You need a motion in a second.
Okay.
An approval.
Can I have a motion to move item 8.2 down to 8.6?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move 8.2 to 8.6.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to move item 8.2, number 17-220-00004, down to 8.6. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. It's the funnest thing to be, appears, to hit the gavel. On to new business, item 8.1, I will open the public hearing for item 16210-00005. Do I have to say the number of everyone as it comes through for the record? Yes, okay. Okay, and we will have a staff presentation. Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, it's my privilege to present to you tonight the case of a rezoning of a portion of Palm Valley Phase II Final PAD to the vistas at Palm Valley Final PAD. By way of background on this item, the property is located at the southwest corner of Palm Valley Boulevard and Litchfield Road. It consists of two parcels labeled on the exhibit as parcel A and parcel B. Parcel A has 32.9 acres and is currently occupied by four holes of the Palm Valley Golf Club. And parcel B is 20.7 acres and is the closed golf driving range. The existing zoning of the property is Palm Valley Phase II Final PAD, which was a successor in a name change to the Litchfield Planned Area Development back, which was originally approved back in the early 90s. Parcel A is, has a land use designation under that Final PAD of golf course and open space. And parcel B has a land use designation of mixed-use commercial, which in the Palm Valley PADs is the equivalent of a C2 general commercial district. To the north, you have more of the golf course on the north side of Palm Valley Boulevard, and you have a single-family residential development called the cottages. To the east, you have, again, some more of the golf course and the clubhouse for the golf course. We have commercial uses in the form of hotels and restaurants and offices along the west side of Litchfield Road between the subject property and the Litchfield arterial. And to the south, there are offices and a school. To the southwest, there is actually the Palm Valley Water Reclamation Facility operated by Liberty Utilities. And then to the west, there are single-family homes that were developed in a developing subdivision called Camelot, although it's known also as Cortile in Palm Valley. And then you have some additional holes for the golf course. And the Palm Valley Community Center there, right at the south of Palm Valley Boulevard, just west of the site. So this amendment of the Palm Valley Phase II PAD is proposed, and although it has similarities to the original PAD, it has been submitted as a new PAD within the Palm Valley PAD and will have its own land use designations and development standards, but again, they are similar to what is in the Palm Valley PAD. In parcel A, we have it going from golf course open space, as I had indicated previously, to what is considered urban residential low-density, and that's on 31.7 acres in yellow. And they also plan to have a small portion of the site, roughly about .6 acres, to be developed as urban residential medium-density, which will be a model home area for the duplex and triplex product that they propose to offer in parcel B. There would only be one duplex and one triplex, there would only be five units at that density at the entrance as part of the model home complex. And then there's a 30-foot open-space buffer provided along the east side and along the south side. On parcel A, it's about .6 acres, and that is to provide some guaranteed separation between the proposed residential uses and the commercial uses of the hotels that are already there. Parcel B, as I noted before, is currently zoned mixed-use commercial or equivalent to C2. And the balance of parcel B, the brown area here, is proposed for urban residential medium-density, and the applicant has proposed development of duplex and triplex structures. So we don't have a zoning classification that specifically addresses this type of development, and so through the PAD process, we can consider this type of housing product. It also has a 30-foot open-space buffer along the east side and the south side to separate the residential from the commercial uses. Now, to give you some, a little understanding of the proposed modified development standards for parcel A, in the urban residential low-density area, it's proposed that there will be 87 single-family detached homes on lots that are a minimum of 60 by 120 feet, and with the modified development standards that I'm going to review briefly here. The front setback is normally 20 feet for a garage from the front property line, they have proposed 20 feet from the back of sidewalk, which in this instance would be pretty much the same as the property line. The front setback is typically 10 feet for a side-turn garage, this will allow 10 feet for living forward to allow the home to project in front of the garage, so the garage is not as dominant in the streetscape. The rear setback is proposed to be 15 instead of 20, and the maximum lot coverage is proposed to be increased from 48% to 50%. Now, as I indicated, the urban residential medium-density is only going to apply to the five lots at the entry, these lots numbered 1 through 5, and accommodate one duplex, one triplex. And these will be on a lot size that will be a minimum of 36 feet by 106 feet. That is typically the lot that is in the middle of the triplex configuration, the other lots tend, will tend to be larger than that. The front setback request is the same as with the low-density residential, and as named for the living forward. The minimum lot width would be 36 feet instead of 40 feet. The 40 feet is a standard that is in the Palm Valley Phase II PAD that allows lots of that width. That PAD also allows lots in this configuration at 4,000 square feet, and the minimum lot area proposed is 3,800, and once again, that is only on the middle unit of the triplex structures. And then the maximum lot coverage is proposed to be increased from 50% to 65% because of the nature of the duplex-triplex structures in terms of, in the lot size. And then there's the open space, which basically doesn't allow any development other than landscape within that 30 feet on the southern boundary. The lotting plan that's proposed is, you can see in this preliminary lotting concept plan, the four holes of the lakes golf course, putting green, the small lake, and the restroom are to be removed, and the remaining 14 holes of the golf course are to be reconfigured as a nine-hole championship course. The existing cart path that kind of runs through the site at a diagonal here now will be relocated, but it will continue through the proposed development. So the underpass on Litchfield Road can still be used by the golfers to get to the other side of the golf course. There's 87 single-family home lots, again, 60 by 120 minimum, and 7,200 square feet minimum. The applicant's proposing two single-story floor plans and two two-story floor plans with three elevations each, and examples of those were included in the PAD book support I already mentioned the duplex and triplex structure at the entrance off of Palm Valley Boulevard, and there is a quarter-acre tot lot planned near the center of the parcel here in parcel A. Moving to parcel B, it's proposed that there will be 106 attached single-family duplex-triplex units, 20-foot setback for the garage, 10-foot for living forward besides a side-turn garage, minimum lot width 36 feet, minimum lot area 3,800 square feet, and a 65% maximum lot coverage. And again, the open space buffer along the south boundary and the east boundary. The total number of homes in the project would be 198. The lotting plan, the existing golf driving range equipment, the poles and the netting will be removed except for the three poles at the southwest corner of the site, which are currently equipped with wireless communication facilities, and so those three poles would remain in place for the duration of that operation. If they were ever removed, the opportunity would exist for additional duplex-triplex structures to go into that area as long as they met the minimum standards in the PAD. There's a half-acre tot lot planned near the center of the development, and we're across from the main, or secondary entrance off of Litchfield Road. And there are 10-foot wide pedestrian accessways planned, and if I can control this thing, I'm trying to point them out, you can kind of see them along the backsides of some of the lots. Those are designed in order to provide emergency ingress and egress to the middle triplex unit, and those will be landscaped and developed with a DG path and can be used other than for emergencies, but it's primarily there to satisfy a fire code exiting requirement. In terms of the overall conceptual development plan, the water and sewer service will be provided by Liberty Utilities. Fire department's primary response will be from Station 183 up the road on Litchfield at Avalon, and the fire department's secondary response would be from Station 185, which is at the entrance to Pebble Creek. The project is on the edge of the territory within the vicinity of a military airport and within the traffic pattern airspace for Phoenix Goodyear Airport. However, it's not expected the project will be impacted by that, nor impact the Air Force or airports' operations if it were to be developed. I want to review for a minute how access is proposed to be provided to the development. It's intended to be a gated community with private streets. The primary access will come from Palm Valley Boulevard about 450 feet east of 142nd Avenue, which is the entrance to the cottages, so there's adequate storage space here for turning movements in and out of the project. It will be equipped with a gate in a manner that anyone who gets in here that is not where they want to be, they can have the ability to turn around and exit the entrance. A second access here in the red circle is by way of a private driveway that connects from the property to Litchfield Road that runs between the Hampton Inn and the Romano's Macaroni Grill. And based on the traffic impact analysis and the staff review of that, it's likely that certain traffic improvements will be needed at the intersection of the private driveway in Litchfield Road, including a traffic signal in which the developer would participate, 16% based on the traffic generated by the development. Restriping of the private driveway to more clearly indicate the usage of the current driveway on Litchfield Road, and installation of a right-turn D cell lane on Litchfield Road in this area here for southbound traffic on Litchfield Road that would be turning right into the development. The project has 13.97ths of acres of open space, which is approximately 26% of the site. There are two tot lots, one in each of the parcels, that will be equipped with shade structure and turf play area and other amenities. Pedestrian access is provided throughout the site and also through connections to Litchfield Road and Palm Valley Boulevard. In terms of public participation for this item, the applicant hosted an informal neighborhood meeting in October of last year and tried to introduce the project to the residents in the Palm Valley area. And then a formal neighborhood meeting was scheduled and held on May 2 of this year after the formal application was filed, and about 25 residents attended and expressed concerns at that meeting. They mentioned concerns about traffic, increase of traffic, loss of open space, the potential impact of two-story structures on adjacent properties, where view fences might be used in the project, how drainage would be handled, and then future plans for more residential development of the golf course property. I think, for the most part, those items have been addressed in the applicant's revisions that have been made to the development application and through stipulations that have been recommended to you in the draft ordinance for this case. I will note that a public hearing was scheduled for May 17, but it was postponed at the request of the applicant and rescheduled to tonight's meeting. All the publication and notice requirements, though, have been satisfied, and no written objections have been received to date. In terms of the staff analysis, we find that the vistas at Palm Valley PAD is consistent with the subject property's neighborhood land use designation in the Goodyear 2025 General Plan, which generally allows a density up to five units per acre for single-family, and then slightly higher, or higher densities when certain standards are met in terms of access to arterial streets and positioning of the property with respect to other land uses. The proposed single-family uses will be compatible with the surrounding area in terms of land use, and we believe that the impacts of additional traffic that are generated by the project will be mitigated by certain improvements being required. The project offers a variety of housing product in the form of duplex and triplex buildings that we don't have much of in Goodyear, and that's in addition to standard detached single-family homes. And the medium-density product serves as a transition between the lower-density residential to the west and the commercial uses along Litchfield Road and McDowell, and will provide additional housing units that can help support the commercial activity. So for these reasons, we have recommended that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the city council approval of an amendment to the Palm Valley Phase II PAD for the vistas at Palm Valley Final PAD zoning on the 53.6 acres there at the southwest corner of Palm Valley Boulevard and Litchfield Road, and as, and subject to stipulations as outlined in the draft ordinance number 171351, which is in your support material. At this point, Mr. Chairman, commission members, the applicant is represented by Mr. Ed Bull, and they have a presentation they would like to make to the commission, so if it would please the commission, I would be, would like to turn it over to Mr. Bull at this time, and then stand for questions unless you have questions you would like to ask of me right now.
I think that's fine.
I have one question. On Litchfield Road, isn't there a tunnel from the Palm Valley Golf Club?
Yes.
And it goes under the road? And where are these golfers going to, they're going to be coming through the neighborhoods? Or are they going to keep, are they going to make golf course paths for the carts?
Chairman Barnes, Commissioner Maloney, if you can see on your screen where the floating hand is right here on Litchfield Road, the underpass goes under Litchfield Road right here now, as you indicated, and it comes out and it goes around, there's a restroom facility and a putting green there now, those will be removed, but the cart path will continue through the, through the development. All the way along here, there'll be one crossing of a road that serves the development, and then it will continue on to reach the rest of the golf course.
I have one quick, I have one quick question. You talked a little bit about the public hearing, were there any citizen comments on the impact of this development on the school system during that public hearing? Did anybody bring that up to you?
Chairman Barnes, Commissioner Keys, there was, there was a concern mentioned that it would, obviously, that additional units will generate more population, which will include school-aged children, but the applicant had indicated that they met with both the Litchfield Elementary School District and the Agua Fria Union High School District, and that they felt that capacity was available for the additional students. We had notified the school districts of the proposal, and we have not received any information to the contrary.
Okay, so the developer did, well, I can ask them when they, they come up.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Chairman, if I can interject one second, I believe Mr. Schmidt handed out to you a revised stipulation number five regarding the, the timing for the payment of the 16% for the traffic signal in lieu payment. Essentially, what that revision does for interested guests is time that payment from the final plat recordation, but then move it to the issuance of the first building permit. So essentially, what that means is they would make that 16% payment prior to the issuance of any, of any building permits for the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
So we give Mr. Bull.
Laney, can you switch presentations?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ed Bull, 702 East Osburn, I'm here representing Merrittage Homes. In fact, Evan Bilton from Merrittage is here with me this evening. If you have questions of either of us, or Ron Hilgard, who's on the engineering and design team, we're all here to answer whatever questions you may have. To begin with, I agree with everything that Joe just said, and I'll do my best to not repeat it all. There is some duplication between the slides, but we will try to minimize the duplication. We, as a, as a starting point, and I'll end the same place in a few minutes, we appreciate staff's recommendation for approval, we accept stipulations 1 through 19 that are in the draft ordinance, including that amended stipulation five, and we appreciate input that we receive from neighbors at both neighborhood meetings, plus a number of follow-up one-on-ones or two-on-twos, and calls, and emails, and so on and so forth. And as we'll get into in a minute, as Joe mentioned, we did our level best to be very good listeners and be very responsive. I'm not prepared to say we made every neighbor happy on every issue, but we sure tried to work with staff and our neighbors to come forward with a good, high-quality development that will be compatible and a good reuse of this infill redevelopment site. As you're looking at this aerial, as you know, the southern half, roughly, is a long vacant driving range that is not the pride of the city or the pride of the neighborhood. The north half, roughly, is four holes of the lakes golf course, which is one of two courses at Palm Valley. As Joe mentioned, and as you know from your packet, the lakes course, like a lot of shorter courses, is challenged. What the golf course operators, owners and operators desire to do is to take these four holes and replace them with housing, and then take the other 14 holes and convert it into a nine-hole championship course. So then you have the 18-hole championship course plus the additional nine, so you have a 27-hole championship course, which there's a couple golf course experts here that are associated with the course owners and operators who could explain that better than I, but as I understand it, you can get almost the same play out of 27 holes as you can out of 36 when they're properly managed, and championship holes are what helps make a golf course viable. So until we get into some of the other information, the bottom line, where we'll end up as well, is the same place Joe did in his presentation, and request your commission's recommendation for approval in accordance with staff's recommendation and 19 stipulations. The site, obviously, you've seen and we've talked about, what I would like to do is touch some on this plan. Most plans, north is up here, north is to at least my right, I presume it's to your right on your screen as well, but as you all know, Litchfield Road runs north and south. There's a lot of features on this plan that Joe has already talked about, and I'm happy to go into more detail if you want, but I won't. to go into more detail if you want, but I won't repeat unless you ask me to. This is a blow-up of that same site plan, but here we've put these little clouds on here identifying some of the many changes that we made, made in response to requests from neighbors and requests from staff. And walking around there, you will see a bunch of blue asterisks along the western perimeter, which is toward the top. You'll see blue asterisks just to the west of the Montessori and the Park School, which is on the east edge of parcel B, and you'll see some asterisks on lots 15, 16, and 17 as well. All of those asterisks provide that those lots, those dwelling units, are limited to one-story in height, and as is indicated there, that's stated not only in our development booklet and our plans, but it's reconfirmed in stipulation 14. There's also on here, as Joe referenced, this particular cloud, which identifies this 30-foot buffer that Joe was talking about that goes all around here. That's in stipulation 10. In talking about traffic-related issues, it's neighborhood meetings and, and offline neighborhood discussions, we were challenged by some neighbors and staff to help address some existing traffic issues that exist at this intersection of Litchfield and this east-west private drive. And specifically, as Joe mentioned, we are required by stipulation five to contribute to a future traffic signal that may be warranted in the future, but we have to make that contribution before we pull our first building permit. There also, back when Litchfield was built and this development occurred, there was not a city requirement for a right-turn D cell lane in this location, so coming south on Litchfield today, there is not a D cell lane. We, by stipulation six, are required to come in and retrofit a D cell lane into that location. There's also been some challenges here with people maybe getting confused as to which side of this island they should go on, so we agreed, and we have in stipulation 19, that we will do some restriping out there in accordance with striping-related information that Joe relayed to me that their traffic, in-house traffic people came up with as a, to deal with that. We also, in addition to one-story homes along, starting with 143 up through 156 and also 15, 16, and 17, which were agreed to in a second neighborhood meeting, and while we have view fencing along, had view fencing along all of these lots of 143 to 156, we were asked by some homeowners that are right under this cloud, unfortunately, but trust me, the homes are right under there, to not have view fencing in the rears of 155 and 156, which Meritage agreed to, and in a minute I'll get a plan up here that reconfirms that. This little note provides that the separations from house to house are over 100 feet. The tract is hovering between 90 and 100 feet in places that varies in width, but there's a great deal of separation in here, and that's intentionally for a number of reasons, including as is reflected on this landscaping plan. Now where north is up, this is the area that we were just talking about along in this area, where there's tremendous separation, there's the tracks that are in there, landscaping to the extent landscaping is appropriate and so on, as well as the landscaping around this 30-foot tract that comes around the southeast and southeast perimeters and elsewhere within the development. These are some of the open space areas that, that Joe mentioned, little pocket parks and so on inside of the development. This is the wall plan that I was talking about where, and I'll get a slide up here in a second, that shows the particular wall types, but this red indicates a primary, a primary theme wall, and I'll show you that in a minute, but it's a, it's a well-appointed, solid CMU block wall, which again, we were asked to put in here for various privacy reasons, whereas this blue wall is one that has two feet of wrought iron over four-foot a CMU wall. And again, the separation's here 100-foot plus anyway. As, but we did that as a request from some neighbors right in here and confirmed it on this plan, and when we look at this particular elevation right here, this is where that primary theme wall, that's what it looks like. It's, it's very nice, very attractive. It's the same type of primary theme wall that would be provided elsewhere around the perimeters of the development. As opposed to, this is what was proposed adjacent to those two lots, which is four-foot a CMU with two feet of wrought iron on top, that will be provided along these lots where the blue is indicated and elsewhere on this plan. When we circle back to this aerial, one of the things that we discussed in a neighborhood meeting, and I want to emphasize here, is, and the, and the golf court owner emphasized this in a neighborhood meeting where he was asked some questions about it. Importantly, this northern roughly half of the property where the four holes are today is not abutting any single-family homes. It is not like it's a fairway lined with homes on both sides. It kind of stands here on its own, adjacent to the streets and adjacent to the Palm Valley Community Center, but no fairway that runs through a neighborhood adjacent to homes is a part of this request. And that was reconfirmed in the last neighborhood meeting, and I believe also in an offline discussion between the golf course owner and some neighbors. This parcel B, as I said before, has not been the pride of Goodyear or the adjacent neighborhoods for quite a while. I'm not sure it was the pride of Goodyear or the adjacent neighborhoods when it was operating because of lights and other activity that's there and so on and so forth. But this is classic, at least in my mind, classic infill redevelopment and improvement of properties that are very challenged today. This is a conceptual drawing of how the remaining 14 holes could be converted into nine championship holes here on the west side of Litchfield, north and south of Palm Valley Road. Again, this is our proposed development. This is showing those nine holes, and this shows what I was talking about a couple minutes ago, is wherever there's a fairway today going through a neighborhood, there will still be a fairway going through the neighborhood. In other words, all existing homes with golf behind them, whether they play golf or not, is intended to still have golf behind them. When we get into the benefits and compatibilities, and, and here I do apologize because I'm, in addition to some of these other things, repeating part of what Joe concluded with, but we do believe that redevelopment of this vacant driving range is just something that's screaming out to happen. And recognizing, as you may recall from your staff reporter Joe's presentation, that existing driving range is currently zoned mixed-use commercial. It's got a neighborhood immediately to its west, and the Lakes Course is challenged. So from our perspective, it's calling out for redevelopment, and doing this where we're redeveloping the driving range and improving the challenged Lake Course into a nine-hole championship course, which is combined into a 27-hole championship course, is a very good thing and is a part of what occurs as, as cities evolve and, and change for the better and so on. Joe's talked about appropriate transitions. He's talked about diverse housing choices where we're often encouraged to provide single-family detached, but also single-family attached for-sale housing. All of this housing that we're proposing is for sale. We're consistent with general, we're consistent with the general plan, and as I tried to touch on in the slide with the little clouds on it, we really did listen to neighbors and staff, the one-story, the substantial off-site traffic improvements, the 26% open space, the wide buffers all around the development, view fencing prohibited in sensitive locations, and on and on. In addition to that, at least from our perspective, bringing in additional homeowners, homeowners which may not be finding the housing they want today in Goodyear if they're looking for single-family attached homes, it may be a little different demographic, more diverse community, which is good for a variety of reasons, including providing additional demographics to support existing and commercial, future commercial that's in the area or we hope is to come to the area. Circling back to where I started, we appreciate staff's recommendation. We appreciate input from our neighbors. We request your Commission's approval in accordance with staff's recommendation. If you have questions now or later, I'll do our best to answer them. I don't know if we have neighbors who intend to speak tonight for or against. If we do, if I could reserve a few minutes to respond to those comments, I would appreciate it if that's acceptable to you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. Do we have any questions?
I do. I, I have two questions. That area between the Macaroni Grill and the Montessori School.
I don't know what I just did, but I'll try to answer your question.
Can you bring that map back up?
It just seems very tight in there, and you have all these homes, and I'm wondering, are you planning on widening that road? And if so, what do the neighbors think about that? What about the Residence Inn and the Macaroni Grill? They're gonna, and Montessori School? If you're gonna widen that road, they're gonna lose parking.
The private drive that you're talking about is a 44-foot wide private drive. Our traffic study has gone through review and re-review by city staff. There's no intent to widen that, to widen that 40-foot, 44-foot wide access easement that's through there. I know that representatives from the Montessori School are here. I don't, I'm locked up now. I don't know what I'm doing, but, but we're not planning to interfere with anyone's parking. We're not planning to interfere with anyone's access. In fact, and I'm repeating myself here, through providing this right-turn D cell lane to get people in by contributing to the signal and by doing restriping here at this intersection, all of those are types of things that we discussed with staff and candidly with the owner of the Montessori School, as well as being good things to do.
And my last question, I'm back to the golf, only because I'm a golfer. I just see that as, you know, people, where I live, you cannot ride your bike, you cannot walk, can't walk your dog on the golf cart path, and that could be a problem, because it's, you're gonna end up, I understand what you're doing, but I think you could end up with problems there. People riding their bikes, they're roller skating, and all that kind of things.
Let me get to a stipulation that I believe addresses your concern. Because we discussed that at considerable length with staff, and it wasn't just Meritage discussing it with staff, but obviously the golf course owner and operator was interested in that issue as well. So hoping that I can, for example, right in here, you can see locations here and there, and there's another one as well, where it provides for pedestrian connections to that path. Those will be locked pedestrian gates coming into the neighborhood, DG connections, intentionally DG connections rather than concrete. And stipulation 13 talks about use of the cart path is restricted to pedestrians only because we talked about skateboarders and rollerbladers and others. We also talked about the fact that, that there's not golf being played along this cart path. It's moving golfers from one area to the other, which occurs in a variety of places throughout, probably throughout the world where golf is played. And part of what Meritage intends to provide as well, and it's allowed, I believe, by a stipulation, but I know we discussed it with staff, would be to remind people it's for pedestrians only, and some notice it's a golf cart path and that type of thing. So every effort was undertaken to strike a balance between staff's appropriate desire that the path be used for pedestrian connections here and there. The golf court course owners and operators maybe desire if they could just pick and choose and have everything their own way, maybe nobody would be on it like you're used to, other than golf courts. And our desire to try to find some middle ground that would work, that would be safe, that would be limited to pedestrians and so on. So these stipulations, 11, 12, and 13, were discussed pretty carefully with staff, and I think it was Joe who did some editing for those discussions.
Okay, thank you. Question I have comes back to the schools because I am a substitute teacher for the school districts. Can Meritage give us a debrief on the results of the discussion they had with both the Litchfield Elementary and the Agua Fria School Districts?
Let me give you my understanding, and if Evan Bilton from Meritage wants to add to it, or you have more questions of him, feel free. Evan met twice with the school district, school districts, and it's my understanding, confirmed and reconfirmed, that they have capacity for the anticipated students that would come from this development. The question that we had in the neighborhood meeting having to do with schools, as I recall, had to do really with where are the kids gonna go to school, and there was some discussion at that time about changing boundaries here, there, or elsewhere. And it's my understanding, Evan, that the boundaries with respect to schools these students would go to are not changing, at least in the context of your site, is my understanding from. So.
The boundaries are not changing? The boundaries are not changing, so which schools are gonna be most affected? Was there any discussion on that?
Yes.
Only because I'd be very surprised if, it seems like all the discussion I've heard in the past year on Litchfield School District is, there's a lot of folks moving into the area, and that they are at peak now. At peak now. I have 30 to 35 kids in a class at Litchfield Elementary School District, elementary school.
It's my understanding that elementary students K through 5 from this development are currently anticipated to go to Palm Valley Elementary, that what I call at least middle school students, 6th and through 8th grades, are expected to attend Western Sky Middle School.
Yeah.
And then high school-age students are expected to attend Millennium High School.
I'm intimately familiar with Western Sky.
Okay. So, information was provided, meetings took place, and it's our understanding, at least, that the capacity is available, and there's, you know, we think benefits that are derived to the school district from development, but I think your question was focused on capacity, and I'll leave it at that.
Who do you actually meet, by, by way of curiosity?
Who did?
Who do you actually meet when you talk to the school districts?
Do you remember the name?
Do you remember?
The three individuals names hit my mind, but part of the reason Matt did include the detailed summary, including the names and contacts, is that I didn't have the control of yours that I remember.
Looks like Joe's pulling up the names for you, so.
And we can get those, can we get those offline? I don't want to take up too much time now.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call you back to order.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have any more questions? Do you have any more questions? There will be a time for people to speak and ask questions. We have one more, okay.
Mr. Bull, thank you for the presentation. Could you tell me what is the status of the negotiations on the school impact fee?
Did you hear the question?
Yes, yes, I did.
Could you state your name and address for us?
Evan Bilton with Meritage Homes, 510 West Wuleta, Phoenix AZ 85003. I have had two meetings with both school districts concurrently or jointly. I met with Representative Thomas Huffman with the Agra Freya High School District, Dan Insine, and Wendy Quals with the Litchfield Elementary School District. At both of those meetings, I was told that the high school age students would attend Millennium High School, which is approximately 2.8 miles from the proposed development. And I guess apparently there's a high school under construction that would help alleviate, and that may in the future lead to redrawing the district boundaries of where those specific students go. But at the time of my meeting, Thomas Huffman did not have that specific information to share with me. Then in my follow-up meeting, which I did meet with another representative with Agra Freya High School, the Director of Finance, and at that meeting as well, they were not able to confirm when or where the exact boundaries would, change would take place. I would also like to add that as part of those discussions, how our homeowners, schoolchildren would be accommodated and accessed these schools. And the school districts asked if we could provide a new bus stop turnout pickup located on Palm Valley Boulevard. This is something we definitely agreed to, and it will, conceptually, we're discussing it going approximately here, which would alleviate the need for any school buses to have to turn into the neighborhood, and apparently it sounds like that will allow for a more streamlined pickup process for the district. In terms of your question regarding the impact school fee analysis, or so the impact fee amount, we have had ongoing discussions. Certainly, Meritage Homes is committed to paying our fair share. The current amount being contemplated is a little more than what Meritage Homes is used to paying in the valley. They are asking for over $1,500 per lot. We're used to something more in the $5 to $1,000. So we do not have a school donation agreement in place yet, but those discussions are ongoing. We understand the importance to it. Two things Meritage looks at when we look at a new community, its jobs and its access to quality school. It's no secret that homebuyers, those are two things that draw them. So certainly having access to quality schools with sufficient capacity is very important for us, not just to get through an entitlement, but to ultimately create a successful community.
More questions for the applicant?
Can you tell me a little bit more about the duplex and triplex homes that will be going in there? My fear is that the medium density may not match with what Palm Valley currently expects in homes. Is this like a Renaissance villas type of situation, or are we talking about something different? I know that people fear of homes that are very close to each other, especially a high-end area like Palm Valley.
Let me try to get to an elevation. There you go. To begin with, as we're talking about density and data and those kinds of things, because I think that's part of your question, the duplexes, which are on the screen right now, it's kind of an old name, but it's really where you have two attached dwelling units with a property line running down through the middle of it, but they're two separately-owned lots with homes. You can't see it here because one of the garages is tucked around to the side, but each dwelling unit has its own integrated enclosed two-car garage. The, the density that is occurring on this overall site and on the parcel B, which is the duplex and triplex, and I'll get the triplex elevation up here in a minute, but again, under the neighborhood's general plan designation, as Joe indicated, five, five is the allowed density. I think you can go a little over, a little under, that type of thing, but neighborhoods contemplates five-ish units per acre. On parcel A, which is the single-family detached northern half, more or less of the development, there that pencils out at about 2.8 units per acre. Parcel B, which is the duplex and triplex, pencils out at about 5.1 per acre. The overall density in the development is about 3.7 units per acre over the entire 53-plus gross acres. The, this is a, again, an elevation of a duplex. Duplexes are entirely one-story. When we go to a triplex, and this is a Spanish colonial elevation, with a triplex, the end units are one-story, only the middle unit is two-story. Okay? Again, each one of those three homes has its own integrated enclosed two-car garage. Here you can see two of them, the other one's tucked around the end. This is also triplex elevation, it's just, it's a ranch elevation as opposed to the other architectural style. And again, with respect to separations and so on from the, from the west, and I can go back to that if you want, but you may remember that house-to-house along our western perimeter is over 100 feet, and that's tracks that are in there, and landscaping is appropriate occurring in there, and fencing where appropriate.
Which would separate parcel B from the 142nd Ave homes. Is that what I'm looking at correctly?
From 142nd, what separates is from the west, which. Can I pull this up and show you? If that's okay?
Yeah, that right there. 100 feet there.
Over 100 feet, it varies from house to house and so on, but it's over 100 feet of separation. And the track itself in there, I was thinking with 80. Seven-ish, the closest up to about 100, as far as the track widths themselves, because there's a tract on Meritage's side of the property line, well, there's a tract on this side of the property line, and that's a tract as well on the west side of the common property line.
Thank you. I just wanted to see those elevations and see what the triplex looked like, and thank Is there any concern?
He indicated the separations are 90 to 105 along that western. I'm sorry.
It's okay, that's helpful. Was there any concern at the meeting of the high-density, or I'm sorry, medium-density homes causing a, just being very close together?
At our first unofficial neighborhood meeting, which occurred close to a year ago, before we ever filed an application or anything, we had a lot of questions about what are these things that you're talking about and so on, and we talked through it and so on and so forth. And I think as people began to understand better what we were talking about, that helped. By the time we got to the second neighborhood meeting, we had more information, we were committed to one-story in that row of homes all along the west. We could be more specific about the separations and the buffers that are in there. We drilled down pretty deep into what type of walls versus view fencing would occur along there. I, this is new and different, which in some discussions is great because that's additional housing diversity and additional housing choice, but we also understand that different is change, and that sometimes can be, raises questions. We tried to answer every one of them and mitigate every concern as best we knew how to mitigate them.
Something that Renaissance Villas does extremely well, I feel, is they make the area look very lush inside, which hides a lot of the, maybe the feeling of you're being surrounded by large homes. Is Meritage going to do their best to try and make that neighborhood look, I think people are just afraid of that it's going to look unattractive? And Renaissance Villas does a very nice job of making their area, although it's higher density than typical, does a very nice job of hiding that with trees and with lots of lush plants, and it makes it very high-end feeling. I'm just hoping Meritage will make that same commitment.
He's nodding yes, and put the landscape plan out and try to reconfirm that.
Yes, so we envision this as a move-up buyer, very lifestyle-driven, lots of outdoor living areas, front courtyard, side courtyards. Definitely lush landscaping is going to be very important to us to, to appeal to the buyer that we're hoping to accommodate here.
Any more questions from the commission? I have one. It looks like parcel B, I think you're at 5.1 dwelling units, and just to the east, there's existing housing there, which I'm guessing is somewhere around 2.5 to 3. So, or to the west, I'm sorry. So it's to the east if I'm standing upside down. So what, my question is this, why did you choose to go with a denser housing unit right next to one that was less dense?
That's a great question, and that's something that we did struggle with. But after you walk the site, get a little bit more familiar with the amenities around the area, you have some very high-use, commercial uses, some two- and three-story office buildings, hotels, you have a water, infrastructure treatment recharge plant, you have a Great Heart School to the south down there, you also have a Montessori School off to the west. So be, I'm standing upside down in this. So because of those reasons, we felt it made a lot of sense from a planning and land use standpoint, to try to concentrate a more walkable urban infill product closer to the retail dining and shopping offices, and then put the traditional single-family detached homes more away from the high-use traffic corridors of this area.
So am I correct in understanding that the houses in parcel B along the west, the ones that are adjacent to the existing houses, those are all limited to one story? So you would have duplexes, but no triplexes? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Again, those little blue asterisks on lots 143 through 156, those are all duplexes, all one-story, and then we were asked to extend the one-story limitation, three lots further north as well, on 15 through 17.
Any more questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Questions for, for Joe? I know I have one. My, my only question to Joe is, there's two empty lots, north and south of Montessori, which I'm assuming are zoned to some sort of commercial. And my question is, by putting housing in there, potentially two stories, is that going to limit what those owners can do versus what it's currently zoned for?
Mr. Chairman, we examined that issue because, and anticipated some of the concerns of the adjoining commercial owners, because normally commercial has a greater burden for providing separations when they were up against residential. So what we did is, we examined that issue and issued a zoning interpretation that the 30 feet that's provided on the residential portion will count toward the separation from the commercial properties, and to minimize or eliminate the impact of that where, where they were adjacent to commercial before, and then the property gets changed to residential, and it, it doesn't seem quite fair to impose additional burden on them when they didn't have it to begin with. This property likewise is zoned mixed-use commercial, which is equivalent to a C2. We have had site plans in previously on this property, north of the Montessori School, for a two-story office building. Because of the economy, it didn't go forward at the time, and, but is likely to get resurrected one of these days. We've had a, within the last couple of years, we've had a new pre-op meeting with them. I think they're just waiting for the right user to come along. And then this parcel is vacant, we haven't, haven't seen anything on it recently, recently, but, you know, by providing that buffering along that eastern side of the residential, we hope that that will help mitigate any adverse effects there.
Any more questions for staff? No? In that case, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? I have at least one speaker card. Do I go speaker card first? Okay. Does staff need to explain the rules?
You'll have three minutes to speak, so I'll be timing you at, at the 2.5-minute mark. I'll give you a little warning, and then I'll say time at 3 minutes, and please conclude your comments then.
Okay. So our first speaker, forgive me if I mutilate the name, is Guy Hosh. And please, again, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Guy Hosh, address 14428 West Ajamon Avenue. Thank you, council members. How many, how many of you live in this Palm Valley area that's going to be exposed? Two of you? And how many out here? Just a handful, looks like the rest of them, or maybe perhaps of the development. When we bought the house 12 years ago, one thing that caught our eye and our attention to this area was that intersection, turning into there, you got the fountain, and you had the golf course on the left, golf course on the right, and that's going away. You can have huge two-story houses at that intersection, I believe, and the name vistas. I mean, when you go to the Rocky Mountains, or you go to northern Arizona, you see the word vista, you park and take a picture, and you go, wow, that's really nice. That's a real misnomer for this area. Anyway, so that's my, throw on that. You had mentioned just a few minutes ago that there was an informal meeting with residents a year ago. I knew nothing about that, I'm sure nobody else knew anything about that. Do you have any paperwork that explains what kind of meeting it was about?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a point of order, please, if the public would address their comments to the commission?
Okay, please.
Sorry. So if we could get some paperwork on the type of meeting it was, and how many people from the Palm Valley area actually participated in that meeting? So anyway, we didn't know about this until a week ago when my wife passed. The Bolton Board at Palm Valley Boulevard, which is just about 20 feet from the stop, so when you stop at that corner, you don't see that sign unless you're the second or third car in. And I was on vacation, I don't know if, if the, the sign or the notice about this, how long ago it was sent out to the homeowners, but I don't remember seeing one until just a week and a half ago. Putting this development in the area, unlike the community, unlike our community, would bring in less tax dollars to the city. There's tens of thousands of There's tens of thousands of acres in Goodyear available. Why can't this development be set, uh, in one of these other available areas in Goodyear? It's huge. I mean, Goodyear has a huge amount of property. Why here? Probably just because of the, the name Palm Valley.
Time.
I'm done.
That's your three minutes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other people from the public that wish to speak? Okay, we have one more, or we have some more cards? Okay. Okay, our next person, I'm sorry, I can't read this well, Paul. Longcar, okay. And please, give us your name and address when you come to the podium.
My name's Paul Longcar. Uh, I live at 14328 West Alborado Drive, and I'm just like the, the guy that just spoke, uh, never did hear about any meetings, uh, and never did get anything in the mail either, so, uh, telling me about the stuff going on. I oppose the project, uh, in, in, in just what he said, basically, is that, uh, the area has plenty of area for growth. Uh, this area is a golf course, uh, that's why I bought my home here, I live a block away. I think that changing that corner, just like he said, if they came in here, had a golf course starting right where it does, uh, and not having access onto Palm Valley, all access comes onto Litchfield, uh, I would have no problem with the development. Uh, I think what they're proposing, uh, completely ruins, uh, a real bright spot in the, uh, Goodyear area. I strongly disagree with the layout, this is the first time I've seen the layout, uh, someone posted, uh, something at our mailboxes, otherwise I didn't even know about, uh, this whole project. I felt I'd get something in the mail, uh, it kinda seemed like it's pushed through with no one knowing. Uh, this was, project was granted, a special use permit, uh, as a golf course, and it should remain that, a golf course. Uh, you should not be allowed to come in, uh, change, uh, a whole project, uh, so they can make money. It's not about that. This was open space, if they, if they can't make money at a golf course there, they should sell the 18 holes, uh, to another developer. The, uh, the, the, the whole idea of this is, is hard as a homeowner. I, I walk there every day, uh, to, to absorb. It's not fair, it's not right, and it should not be allowed to go through. Uh, it, it, I'm not coming here and, if this was a, if this development was a, uh, a farmland, I would not be here. They have the right to develop it. Uh, this land is a, is a golf course that was put in years ago with a special use permit. It shouldn't be allowed to be changed. You're, you're ruining Goodyear by changing this corner. It's sad, it's a sad day.
30 seconds.
That's good, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Our, uh, our next card is Kathy Dustridge, go ahead, did I get that right? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Dustridge, and I live at 14457 West Edgemont, and just like everyone else, I wasn't notified of any of this until the postings came on the mailbox. My favorite way home is always to turn down Palm Valley and see all the open space and the green, and we did our due diligence when we were locating a place to live and checked out the zoning, and it was zoned for open space, so we weren't worried about that changing. And, so, we would appreciate if you consider that that is what it's supposed to be, will totally change not only the view, but the congestion at that intersection with all that housing in there will be outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna, can I ask staff a question? So, notices go out to everyone who lives within 500 feet of the perimeter, correct?
Well, um, if we wrap up the public comments, then, uh, Mr. Schmitz can address the notifications and things of that nature.
Okay. Okay, I'll call the next speaker, Alicia, is it Ray? Raj or Lisa Raj? Name and address, please.
Uh, my name's Alicia Raj, I live at 14331 West Montavista Road, and, um, we are new to the neighborhood, um, we love our neighborhood, uh, we came from, um, we've been in the area for quite a while, but moved to this beautiful neighborhood, as the lady that went before me said, um, she had done her due, due diligence, and we had also, and we had no anticipation that this would be changing. We live right on the fairway, uh, right by the Whale Lake, if you know what I'm talking about, if you can look for the map. Um, my concern is that when they change the golf course, when they restructure, our backyard's going to completely change also. Um, I'm concerned about the access to the golf course, as you mentioned, um, because I know that with that many more people, you know, in that neighborhood, there are going to be a lot more people walking that golf course, and I think that, um, that's going to leave us open to a lot more crime in our neighborhood. Um, I understand if the golf course is struggling and they need to sell part of the land, I can understand that, but I think there might be a, a different alternative. Um, how is that going to affect our HOA and our community center? I wanna know if that's going to be a part of the HOA or not. My concern is that, um, the congestion will also be very, very bad on Palm Valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Terry Chase, is that right?
Hi, I'm Terry Chase, I live at 14457 West Edgemont. Um, I also, we bought the house two years ago. With buying that house, as you enter that, going up Litchfield Road and you turn on that Palm Valley, that is what attracted us to that area. Um, even today, I will drive that way home, because I know as soon as I get past that, that line of restaurants, I can feel myself unwind. Like, that open space actually makes me breathe easier and relax more as I draw, I've down Palm Valley to get to my home. It's almost like letting go of work stress before you even get home, like, it gives me that luxury of being able to do that. When we have family and friends that are visiting from out of state, we will purposefully drive that way for their first initiation into where our new house is, because that feels amazing. I can't even imagine without that, the emotional component of where I live will feel completely different. I too have, um, concerns with what we're paying for HOA. We have the luxury of paying our HOA fees to have use of those items, especially when you look at that diagram, the tennis courts and the pool are right there next to this development. So, is it going to become that feeling of it's built, that pool and that tennis court now belong to that establishment? Are we gonna have access to it in the same way? Because it's gonna be overcrowded and overused by so many families. You talk about 198 units, but nobody has projected how many individuals that truly is. Like, I'd love to hear that number and how it's going to impact that right in that backyard, as if that is part of that development and use for them. So, again, it's very emotional, um, when I bought the home, it has that feel of being able to turn down Palm Valley and unwind and breathe.
Thank you. Okay, Charles Fox, I know I'm getting that name right. Name and address, please.
My name's Charles Fox, 14334 West La Riana. Uh, I just have two concerns, one is, which has been stated, the extra congestion along Palm Valley Road, I, I, I thought about it as you were talking about the light and the bus stop, that there might be something to do with, uh, traffic calming or something that would be funded with the development. Uh, and the other one is, is kind of what the last person brought up, is that if you look at this, if you look at normal housing, they normally put some sort of pool or some kind of establishment inside of it. They didn't do that here, as you look at it, because they're planning to put them in Palm Valley Community Center. I don't have an opinion as to whether the community center's overrun, but they're gonna have a 50-foot walk over there, that's gonna be their backyard pool. So, that, that has to be part of the decision-making. Those two things I would hope you, you take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another one? What's the record, by the way? We're not even close, are we? Okay, Kim Anderson.
Hi, I'm Kim Anderson, address is 1832 North Litchfield Road at Montessori and the Park.
You're with the school?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I definitely hear everybody's concerns and the residential, those are, that's a lot of fair issues, I believe. Um, we were feeling the same way until we were able to get a meeting with Meritage after the second homeowners' meeting. We didn't get notified about the first because of an address snafu, but the letters, he, they were able to show that they should've gotten to us. Um, but at the second meeting, we had a lot of concerns. They came, um, their attorney and Evan and Joe all came to our property. We have existing traffic concerns that are very scary around our school right now, um, regardless of adding all these homes. Um, with that said, the additional things they did with the traffic light, the right-hand turn, um, the additional striping, all those kinds of th- things to try to help alleviate some of that, um, access, I think it would be good to have signage right there that says what they're about to enter into, because we get people that just drive down that road, think it's gonna get them somewhere else that it's not going to, maybe even a no, no inlet or outlet, I'm not sure the right one. Um, but they've been, they've been very supportive, very good listeners, once they saw our concerns. So, while having all of our bunnies and jackrabbits and all the animals and the coyote families leave that very ugly golf course, um, driving range, um, will impact our kids. I definitely, I definitely appreciate the help that they've given us in, uh, trying to give some comfort to the additional traffic, and hope they'll continue to help, um, as issues that are unforeseen today come up. Um, so, I'm, I'm in support in the way that they've handled our relationship, and just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak to the commission? No, in that case, I get to ask Joe my question? Okay.
If, um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if, if, um, the chairman and the commission call you, Mr. Bull, then you have your opportunity for rebuttal. If, if they call you, then, then you'll have an opportunity for rebuttal if they have additional questions. Um, Mr. Chairman, if you close, um, the public hearing at this point in time, and then ask Mr. Schmitz to come up, and if you have any other questions of the applicant, um, you know, you can ask him to come up to make any clarifying remarks for you.
Okay, I've closed the public hearing, and I revise, actually, I'm looking at my notes, I did ask you all my questions, so I didn't have any left. Now, the commission can discuss this matter.
I have one more question.
Oh, okay, we can ask one more question.
Has there been any discussion about what Palm Valley would do with that property? They want to revamp that, that last nine holes, or that, the, um, what is that called? That golf course? Has there ever been any discussion about what they would do with that? They're, they're gonna sell it off to somebody. And so, the question, or has anybody talked to them and just said, you know, "We'd like to give it to you, but if you're not interested in this, then so-and-so is looking at us"? No? Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Maloney. And there's two people here associated with Golden Buffalo Golf Management, which owns and operates the golf course. So, if I in any way misspeak, please come up and correct me or fill in the blanks. But when I was first asked to sit down and discuss the possibility of working on this case, the actual first discussion was with Roger Nelson, who is with the ownership group of the golf course. He couldn't be here this evening, but he's, by everything I've seen, very genuine, very straightforward, answers questions yes and no kind of guy. And in that first discussion, which I think Ron Hilgarth Wilson was in as well, we're talking about, should they simply, what are the alternatives? I mean, and none of this is intended as me speaking for the golf course ownership, or in any threatening way, or anything like that at all. But, you know, one possibility is you just close the lake's course. Another possibility is just try to limp along the way it is, but they knew that wasn't the right answer. And the other possibility was, let's take an existing challenging situation and convert it into nine championship holes, which I can put that slide up here, again, somewhere, as to how they envision the nine championship holes laying out, and turn a challenging situation into a plus for the golf course in the city and the area, because, again, I'm repeating myself, but it's my understanding that, that 27 championship holes plays almost the same as 20, as 36 championship holes, when you do appropriate staging and so on, and golfers, if you, you know, I, I'm not the golfing expert in the room, but it was seen as an excellent opportunity to take a challenged, short course and turn it into a championship course, and at the same time, to take advantage of an opportunity to deal with vacant parcel B, which, for all the reasons that have been discussed, had a lot of challenges when it's operating, has at least as many, maybe more, challenges now, and it is this transition piece between residential and commercial, but it's hidden from the arterials, so it's not a good viable commercial property, even though it's zoned commercial. So, if, if there's things, additional questions you have, or things you gentlemen wanna, wanna add, and by you gentlemen, I mean either Jim Hamilton or Matthew Phillips, who's associated with the golf course ownership and management, we wanna answer your questions and answer questions of any neighbors, including notice and corner treatment and other kinds of things.
I have a question that's a, because I'm with Palm Valley, which next to the north golf course itself.
How do we handle, I'm sorry, how do we handle more questions? We can't, we can't, address, we can't entertain any more questions. I'm sorry, we, we can't entertain any more questions at this point. We had a time for everybody to speak, and that's all, we're allowed. Now, if one of the members wants to ask a question.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm all set, thank you.
Okay.
You were talking about the notification process, is somebody gonna talk about that now? Because it seems like there's a definite.
Mr. Schmitz is gonna, Mr. Schmitz, Mr. Schmitz will address that question.
Okay.
Uh, Christian Barnes, uh, Chairman Barnes and Commissioner Keys, uh, the applicant did a neighborhood meeting back in October of 2016, and, uh, that was an informal meeting that was run solely by the applicant. Staff didn't attend that meeting, so, uh, Mr. Bull can elaborate on that notice, uh, for that meeting. For the, uh, the neighborhood meeting that we hosted, uh, it was held in, on Tuesday, May 2nd. We typically send out notices to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, so we go 500 feet all the way around and.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I'm sorry, I was interrupted. Uh, the state law requires a notice of 300 feet, we go 500 feet, we go over and above that requirement. Posted a sign on the property in advance of the neighbor, at least 15 days in advance of the neighborhood meeting, and there was a display ad in the, uh, Arizona Republic Southwest Edition, uh, 15 days prior to the neighborhood meeting. Likewise. Likewise, we did the same thing for this public hearing. Well, we actually did it for the public hearing that was scheduled for May 17th, but since it was postponed, we sent out notices again to advise property owners of the new meeting dates. Total of 155 notices were sent out. Whether they went far enough is a matter of opinion, but that's all I'll have to offer for you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No questions.
No, you get a chance for rebuttal? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that would be yours and the commission's discretion.
We will offer Mr. Bull a chance for rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, tagging on to Joe's discussion of notices for the second neighborhood meeting, which was the official neighborhood meeting, I think he suggested that maybe I address the notices for the first unofficial neighborhood meeting that we had about a year ago. We sent out notices to 500, 500-foot property owners of record, which we get from the assessor's office. As one of the speakers alluded to, the assessor's, she mentioned a snafu. I think her, her letter went to an old address, I believe is what it was. And then we worked and scrambled to get that changed and caught up when we became aware of it. But there were a whole bunch of 500-foot notices that went out, and I believe, I, I cannot speak for the HOA or anyone else, but I believe from memory, there was also an email blast that went out through either the HOA or the community facility that's there, one or the other. But we had approximately 64 neighbors by our records that signed in at that first meeting. So when we then worked with staff to notice up the second meeting, we'd take that same 500-foot ownership list, updated as appropriate to bring it forward about a year. And we also supplement it with anybody who signed up for the first meeting, who isn't on the 500-foot list. We cross-references and, and send out those notices as well, in addition to the publication and other kinds of things that Joe talked about. And again, I think, I'm not positive, but I think that the association also did an email blast for that second neighborhood meeting, I believe. With respect to some other issues that were raised, we did our level best, not only through notices, but through responding to phone calls or emails or other things, to talk with anyone who wanted to talk with Evan or me or anyone else associated with the development, whether that was going out and meeting at their school or meeting at a gate across the street or may, whatever it may be, because there were questions about things like, are the underpasses going to stay? And yes, they're both going to stay. And there were questions, I believe, I'm not sure if it was a neighborhood meeting or with staff, or they're going to be people walking around on the active golf course as opposed to walking through where we have the, the cart path that's shown, that's not an active golf course coming through here. But again, the answer's pedestrian only on this internal path. There'll be signage indicating that leaving this development is going on to somebody else's private property. So we know that today, I think that after hours, people may walk or walk their dog or something on the golf course, which happens lots of places, whether they should be doing it or not, I'm not the judge of, but we'll make clear that when they're leaving this property, they're going on to somebody else's private property. We also did have some discussions at a neighborhood meeting at the south, regarding the immediate southwest corner of Litchfield and Palm. And I may or may not be able to pull that up here, but in your development booklet, there's an exhibit that shows the corner, and it shows as far as the outside treatment and nicely addressed, nicely appointed and so on and so forth, treatment that's occurring at the corner in a manner which we discussed at, at least one of the neighborhood meetings and discussed with staff. But we also respect the concerns and the landscape plan probably is as good as any to show some of the things that are proposed at the corner with a lot of landscaping that's occurring there and so on. But I also appreciate, and so does Evan appreciate, the concerns that were voiced here this evening, which is the first time I've heard of these concerns with two-story homes at that corner. So I don't know how to do this, other than tell it to you and they're hard to read on there, but the lots that are proximate to that corner, Meritage is willing to limit to one story. And I'm trying to talk and find the right exhibit here at the right time and probably not doing a very good job of either one. But with respect to the lots that are located, and it's hard to read on that exhibit, but this is lot 63. And you go on up to the corner, but bottom line, from this lot up to the corner, from this lot going on up to the corner, and then these three lots coming across, although they're well separated from Palm Valley Boulevard with landscaping and setbacks, Meritage is also willing to limit those lots proximate to Palm Valley and these lots through, down to here, to one-story homes in, in response to concerns that we heard here this evening, if the commission is inclined to do that and the staff would allow us to do that. I could go into other comments or questions that, that some neighbors voiced, if you want me to, but without repeating everything Joe or I said before, we did our level best to listen, and as you know, through lots of these stipulations, addressed the things that we knew to address and are trying to address yet more here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. Is there any discussion the commission members would like to have amongst each other? Anything to say? This is where we get to sway each other one way or the other.
Yeah.
What we're saying.
I get nervous because.
Mr.
I have commissioners here.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make just two points of clarification, one for the benefit of the commission and the other for the benefit of our guest tonight. The stipulation potential that Mr. Bull was referencing in regards to one-story homes from lot number 63 north to Palm Valley Boulevard and the additional three lots on the south side of Palm Valley Boulevard, that currently in the stipulations before you in the draft ordinance allow the flexibility to be one or two-story? So if that is something that the commission would, would like to have as part of the ordinance to limit the height of those residential units, that would be something that you would need to include in any motion that you make tonight, just for clarification. And then finally, I would also say, just for the benefit of, of everybody in the room tonight, that because we have five commissioners tonight, the bylaws require four affirmative votes to recommend approval to the council.
And I ask you for the benefit of the crowd, if, I mean, obviously, if this commission passes it, then we've recommended to city council that they pass it as well. If this commission does not pass, then explain to us what happens at that point? It still goes to city council?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. It would proceed on to city council with a negative recommendation from the planning commission.
Is it possible we can make a stipulation?
No, can I just interject? If, if you move to approve it and it fails, you have two options. One, you could then continue it if you requested. The applicant could, upon hearing of a potential denial, they could ask you to continue it and then work on the plans. So you could ask the applicant if they wish to do that. Otherwise, your other option is it would be denied for failing to be approved. So you do have an option to continue it if requested by the applicant.
But the applicant can still, even if this commission fails, the applicant can still choose to let it go to city council, it's just going to be with our recommendation of failure versus pass, correct? Yeah, for, for anyone that doesn't understand, this is an advisory committee and a chance for the public to make their voices heard and for us as citizens to just make recommendation to city council on what we think they should do, but they have the final say.
So for clarification, there's no option to approve with stipulations that the developer work with the community to address some of the outstanding issues?
The, Mr. Chairman, Commission, the commission, it certainly does have the ability of adding or modifying this draft stipulations before you tonight. I would encourage you, if you modify them however, that the commission be specific in what those stipulations are. And then, yeah, so you just need to be specific in, in terms of what your motion, what your motion would be in that regard.
Some discussion points.
Discussion.
I understand that the, the movement to increase the viability of parcel B is important. I, I agree that that needs to be taken care of. I do have concerns however about the product going in parcel B duplex, triplex still. I also have concerns and this goes to our kind of vision and our duty as paying, selling commissioners is to represent more than just 155 people that receive this. With that concern, I feel that Goodyear, Palm Valley is going to get this product, and I'm not sure it meets with the current product in Palm Valley. If you were to take a look at those two-story houses and the one-story house, I'm not sure that meets the standard. I'm not sure. That's what the discussion is for. But also, if you drive down Litchfield and Palm Valley and think about replacing that corner, that, that beautiful area with homes, that's there to stay. Can't go back. So that's my concern, but of course, I'm willing to discuss other points of interest. I do appreciate Meritage going in and having a vision for the area. However, I'm not sure the vision of replacing that beautiful area with, say, a tot lot and a couple parks really is fair.
I happen to agree also. I am in favor of doing something with parcel B, but I go down that way all the time and it's beautiful. And it does give you a sense of open space. And I think, I understand from a builder's point of view that this is kind of like an urban setting, that they can walk to restaurants and things like that. I get that. I think that's a very important concept. But for the people that have lived there, that have bought those lots with that open space, I know that I would be very upset to losing that corner.
Anyone else have any arguments for or against?
I can appreciate those comments as well. It is concerning that, and that's where the stipulation may come in, where Meritage could work with improving that aesthetic to the community that is not maybe in keeping to engage the residents in, in ensuring that emotional feel is maintained. I, on the other hand, I do think it is valuable development. That parcel B is an eyesore. I think the nine, the championship golf course is a smart development for the area in terms of economic development, but a stipulation asking the developer to work with the community that is there to come to an agreement on, on something more emotional fitting. I don't know how to exactly put that, but there was a snafu. It appears they haven't been heard. I'd like to address that in some way.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion? No, in which case, where's my instructions? Okay. Then I will move to ask for.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bull is asked to address the commission for just one second, if you can indulge him.
Do I have the right to deny Mr. Bull? I'm kidding. You can address the commission, Mr. Bull.
Chairman, Commissioners.
I believe it's closed. I don't, don't believe we're allowed to open it up further. I, so I'm, I'm sorry, sir, I have to follow the rules set down by the city.
As was discussed a few minutes ago, it's unusual to have less than a full commission here, and we've been listening intently to the, to the comments and suggestions. On behalf of Meritage, we do request a continuance. I, I think there's a, a lot of things that have been done right here. We've heard from some folks tonight that for whatever reasons we didn't hear from previously, I don't know if we can address their concerns to their satisfaction or to the commission's satisfaction, but we'd like to have the opportunity to try. So we request a continuance.
So we would need a motion to continue this matter?
Mr. Chairman, Commission, yes, sir, that's correct. So the motion, should you choose to make it, would be to table this request, and then I would also encourage you to, as part of that motion, since we don't have a date certain, direct staff to go back through the public notice process so that people are aware of when this item is ripe for your consideration again. And then, in which case, we will go through, follow the legal publication requirements and notification requirements, so everybody would be aware, everybody within that 500 feet that we're, that, that's what our ordinance requires, would be given notice of the meeting.
Very good. Do I have a motion from a member to allow a continuance, to table this matter and allow a continuance and to recommend staff to, I don't know the right language, but to go through the public notice process again?
Yes, sir.
Can we discuss the public notice idea or the idea of a continuance to me? I, I just feel like there isn't going, I'm looking at this plot plan and I don't see enough people in that 500-foot radius. So I don't see enough people here specifically that is going to reach, and there's a lot more people in Goodyear that drive by that area that are not going to receive notice of this major change to their community.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commission, if I can respond to that question. So our ordinances require us to give the notice, and that's prescriptive, that's exactly what we do. We also give notice to adjacent homeowners' associations, which is a matter of practice and principle that we do, because we have a lot of communities that are HOA. And so we would propose to follow those same exact rules. The concern of, well, how far do we go? We would start, we would start treating this project arbitrary and capricious, meaning differently than other public notice requirements. So what we just need to do is follow our rules and requirements, and we would notify the HOA and ask them to spread the word through their community as well.
All right, I'm gonna, I, can I have order in the chamber, please? All right, does anyone wish to make a motion to table this matter and continue? All right, does anyone wish to make a motion to table this matter and continue? I have no motions to table this matter and grant a continuance, so...
If, yeah, give us one second if you can, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there needs, this body needs to make some, take some sort of action. There has to be a motion of either tabling, as we discussed, approving as requested or with stipulation modifications or recommending denial to the planning commission. So you all as an entity need to take some action on the matter.
And the chair cannot make the motion, is that correct? Or can the chair make the motion?
The chair can in fact make the motion.
And the chair is going to make a motion. And I'm going to move that we table this matter so that the applicant can go back and reconsider this and also ask staff to re-notify, go through the notification process and allow this to be continued until a later date.
Second.
And properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion, wait, one, two, the other motion passes. I get the gavel again. I'm doing it anyway. Thank you, everybody, for coming and participating in this process.
Mr. Chairman, can we just take about a three-minute break?
I call a five-minute recess.
... These are zoned roughly R16 within the PAD. There's R17 zoning to the north, which is Legacy Ranch, and R17 to the south, which is Curtis Commons. There are some existing buildings on the, on the subject property. They are, I believe, storage and some other uses. There is an out parcel right here for an existing residence, but which is not included in the proposal. So as I mentioned, this is a rezon from R110 to R16. The table shows the single-family residential district standards, the R110 as defined by the zoning ordinance and then the R16, which is proposed. The only difference between the two is the lot sizes and some of the setbacks vary. If we look back at the, this map, the R17s have a minimum lot width of 70 feet and the applicant has proposed that the north and south boundaries of the subject property be required to have that 70-foot-wide lot in order to maintain consistency. So one of the stipulations, I believe it's stipulation... Three or four, I'm sorry, I don't know where it's at on my paper, does require them to have that, to provide that 70-foot-wide lots on the north and south boundaries. Oh, number three. This is a overview of the landscape plan and the lot layout that the applicant is proposing. So once again, you can see the red, the red lots are 70-foot-wide lots and that's to the north and south. And then the others are 60-foot-wide minimums. There are, there's one point of access off of Harrison Street into the subdivision. The fire department does require two points of access. So an emergency access point for emergency vehicles is located on this cul-de-sac on the north of the site. So in the proposal, there's 90 lots. The original proposal with R110 zoning was 48 lots, so there is an increase of lots. But it does remain consistent with the adjacent residential neighborhoods. This is a slide, or this exhibit was provided by the developer. This is showing the entrance off of Harrison Street into the community. So if you were to take a right, or take a left, that would be into the Curtis Commons neighborhood. The applicant, excuse me, proper notice was provided for the public hearing meetings and the neighborhood meeting was also noticed and held on May 31st. There was roughly 10, 10 to 15, some were children. So 10 to 15 residents who showed up to the meeting. They had some general questions about the proposal, but generally, they were very positive and the developer was there to ask, answer questions. I was there as well. And we did receive a few phone calls from residents just inquiring about what the request actually meant. One person was very excited that the stuff would be taken off the corner and a nice development would be added. The applicant has demonstrated all necessary requirements as provided by the zoning ordinance and engineering standards. Therefore, staff recommends approval, subject to the stipulations included in the draft ordinance. The applicant is here and available for questions as well. But this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Do we have any questions for staff? No?
One, is 10,000-square-foot lot more of a custom build lot? Is that what you consider a custom build?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Would the applicant like to address the commission?
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Jack Gilmore.
I was gonna say, name and address, please, but you got the name part out.
Gilmore Planning and Landscape Architecture. The address, 2211 North 7th Street in Phoenix. I just want to add a few points to what Alex's presentation. We're showing on the matrix that she had up there on the lot size. Minimum net site area. The R16 obviously allows a minimum of 6,000 square feet. The way we've designed these lots, they're all going to be a minimum of 7,000. So that was a concession by our developer client. And as she said, the intent was to align our 70s with the north and south, so the 70s to 70s and then 60s to 60s. And then we have a variety of lot sizes towards the center. We have about 20% of, 18, just under 20% of open space. And we're here really to approve the zoning. I can tell you that there's been a recent application for preliminary plat, so that plat will be coming back through for approval. And I can tell you, it pretty much reflects the plan that she was seeing tonight. At the neighborhood meeting, we had really a lot of questions. Mostly, the concerns came from access. And one neighbor was really hoping our open space is going to align with the back of his house. He didn't quite make it. He still liked the plan. A lot of interest on what's happening along Cereval. There is an out parcel there and the owner of that property, Mr. Gaitan's wife, were at our neighborhood meeting. They're on board and they're going to participate in the dedication of additional right-of-way. So that's all part of this in the works. Our traffic study says that we need a deceleration lane, so that is going to be part of the preliminary plat, final improvements. And that is illustrated on the plan. So there will be a deceleration lane approaching Harrison from the north. That's going to make that access a lot safer. I know that's been a concern from some of the neighbors to the north and to the south, especially in Curtis Commons. So that is going to improve things. We are participating in the traffic signal at 25%. And the steps include a trigger as one that will become active. Other than that, we're anxious to get this moving forward. And if I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to do that. I'm also here tonight with two of the development team, two members, Ed Reichenberg and Kathy Cheshire. So if the three of us can answer any questions, we'd be glad to be your resource. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
No.
No?
Thank you.
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Question?
So this existing residence that's shown along Cereval Avenue, is that a, is that a single-story, a two-story home? What is that?
It's a, it's kind of a bungalow, so it is a partial. So it is, it is a single residence on a full acre.
Will there be any requirements on the lots or the homes that come up against that, like 1, 2, 3, 46, 45, 44? Are there any, has there been any concern expressed about how those homes, whether one-story or two-story, will relate to that existing residence?
Chair, Commissioners, we did meet with those, the Gaitan family. They have seen this plan and they were impressed and I think relieved that we have so much open space and buffer around them. We made Lot 45 a little bit wider to create some flexibility on that setback for the home. So I think he is pleased. He's got the backyard opening up to our open space and we've got buffer on the north and south. So he's, I think he's very comfortable with this plan.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the applicant? No, thank you very much. In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
Mr. Chairman, point of order, I'm not sure, I don't recall if you asked for speaker cards or if there was anybody else that wanted...
I did not. I will unclose the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item. Seeing none, I will once again close the public hearing and ask if there's any discussion among the commission members.
Nope.
Seeing none, I will request a motion from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 172000002, a rezoning of 27.9 acres from R110 to R16.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to item 8.4 and I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. If I may, we have received a request from the applicant to continue this item. There are still some issues that they are working through with the city. So they sent that request to us. Because we did advertise the public hearing, if there's anybody from the public or if any members of the commission would ask us to make a presentation, we will do so. Otherwise, we would recommend holding off on our presentation until the evening you would consider the item. And then with this continuance, we would request that you continue to a date specific of July 12th.
Thank you. Katie, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? No, any members of the commission that have questions on this item? Then do I need a motion to allow it to continue? Okay, then I will ask the commission for a motion to continue this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue case number 172200003 to the July 12th meeting.
Is that the right one?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I pick the right?
Yeah, you're looking at the one that's got moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we're on item 8.4. Is that motion good or do I need a restatement of the motion?
That motion is fine. It's item 8.4, case 17-350-1234, zeros and a 4.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. But I don't get to close the public hearing.
No, sir.
Okay. Then we will move on. Are we going to 8.2 or 8.5?
8.5.
8.5. So I will open the public hearing on item 8.5. Hello again.
Hello again.
Hello again. Drive through.
The next item is a request for a use permit at the southwest corner of Fillmore Street and Estrella Parkway. So if you'd like... So if you look at the map, it's just south of McDonald's, just to the west of the Quick Trip. Walmart's up to the north. So this is a unique request that differs from the usual use permit reviews that you've seen in the past, whereas there are two drive-through facilities being requested within one use permit. The entire property is being purchased by the Dutch Bros Coffee franchisee, and he's proposing a new Dutch Bros to be located on the south of the site, but would like to lease the north half to another drive-through user. At this point, there's no proposed user, so it doesn't necessarily mean that there will ultimately be a drive-through at that site, but including the second drive-through within this application will ultimately save the customer significant time and money. So the Dutch Brothers site is located, like I said, on the south portion of the site. The northern half, as you can see in this picture, is currently a parking lot and will remain that until a second user is found. We move on to closer version of that. This site plan does include two drive-through lanes that merge into one. The drive-through window does face Estrella Parkway, which is currently prohibited by the zoning ordinance, but as you may remember, a few recent use permit requests have included the request to deviate from this standard. What we have required from these requests is that the drive-through window was covered, and that the proposed site plan and elevations do include a screen along the window up against Estrella Parkway, which you can see was provided. The second evaluation criteria that we've been looking for is that the configuration makes sense, and that if there was a better configuration of the site, we would prefer that layout and recommend that layout. But as we, as most of us know, Dutch Bros is a very popular facility in Goodyear and does require a lot of traffic queuing. Therefore, we think this current configuration does provide the most queuing, so we are recommending that this be permitted. So just like the existing Goodyear Dutch Bros, the site is a drive-through and includes a walk-up window, and in this site plan, you can see it has a significant large covered patio, and then the other elevations, you can see how the site will look. There is a stipulation that does stipulate the elevations in the site plan for the Dutch Bros to be consistent with what was proposed in the use permit, so they can't change this in any way. And also, and to that point, they have submitted their site plan for preliminary review prior to the use permit, so we do know in fact that these will be the plans that, if approved, if the use permit is approved, will be included as a site plan. This next slide shows the site plan for the Phase Two, which was included as the master site plan in your packet, in order to determine traffic patterns and general site layout that would actually make sense and work with the site. The stipulations recommended for this use permit include conformance with this master site plan, so if the second drive-through user were to be developed in any other way, they would have to come back in for a use permit, since it does not conform with the traffic study that was done for this layout. And like I said, any other iteration would require a new use permit. Another request that the applicant has made is that the use permit expire three years, typically it's two years, and then the use permit expires. They have requested three in order to develop their site and work on marketing that northern half of the site, just to give themselves, give themselves a little extra time to work on that. A neighborhood meeting was not required for this use permit, since there are no residents within five hundred feet of the property. However, proper notice was given to the public for the public hearings. That was by postcards to the adjacent property owners. A sign was posted, and a newspaper notice was placed as well. The applicant has demonstrated the need for the proposed use and conformance with the required zoning ordinance and engineering standards. All of the deviations from city standards have been justified. Therefore, staff recommends approval, subject to the stipulations included in the staff report. Caleb Burkey is the Dutch Bros franchisee owner. He does have a presentation for you. Otherwise, after that, I'm available for questions, and his team is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? No, would the applicant like to address the commission?
Hi, I'm Caleb Burkey with Dutch Bros Coffee, address one-four-one-six-zero West Indian School Road in Goodyear. This is Bill Cantieri.
Hello, my name is Bill Cantieri. My address is forty-four twenty-eight East Mountain Sage Drive in Phoenix, and I am Caleb's development manager.
So I wanted to just provide a little bit of information to you guys. I know that traffic and Dutch Bros being popular in Goodyear might have some questions that come with it, so, but first of all, I just want to thank the city of Goodyear just for being so supportive and so awesome to Dutch Bros as a whole, and giving us the ability to even consider another location. So I wanted to kind of start off by explaining and showing a little bit of what's going on at the current Goodyear location. I've been with Dutch Bros for twelve years. I started when I was nineteen, and that's my franchise. And so when we first did this, it was about four years ago, the planning phase was. So if you can see, this is Litchfield Road, this is Indian School Road, and so this was the original development at, at the Goodyear store. So it, you know, at a time, in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, we were planning this, it was a different time, I think even in the economy, and with Dutch Bros as a whole not really becoming a national brand quite yet. So as we got into opening the store, we were pleasantly surprised it was busier than expected. And as we tried to meet the demands and make adjustments to satisfy the neighbors and to do what we can with the blessings God was giving us, we changed the site to this. So we, we added a double funnel to the site plan, just to create more queuing, so we just about doubled what we had on site. So we did that in efforts to make things smoother. So when we, when Alex suggested maybe provide a little bit of information about this new location, about what to expect and how to explain it to you guys, we had timestamp photos that went out to this Goodyear location to try to capture and show you guys what it looks out there on one of the busiest days of the week, which is a Friday. So we just, we just went from seven AM all the way through six PM and snapped a photo from, from the roof to show what the line looks like and what the car counts look like. So I can show you guys. So this is at, June second on a Friday at six eighteen AM. This car represents the third car in line. We couldn't capture the whole line, so the line kind of wraps around, and there's another additional two cars. So this currently is showing three cars. Oh, I'm sorry. This is six PM, I'm sorry, let me start from the beginning here. Sorry for the confusion there. Okay, so this was at the six fifty-nine AM, right around seven, June second. So if you count, starting with the third car, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, so there were seven cars basically in line at that time, at seven AM on a Friday, June second. So June second, eight o'clock, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten cars. Nine AM, three, four, five, six, seven. This, ten AM, gets a little busier, twelve cars total. Eleven AM, fourteen cars.
Don't these people have jobs?
And this actually was our peak at, at noon for sixteen cars for the whole day.
I see, I saw people, I guess, standing outside some of these cars.
Taking orders.
Were they taking orders?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they're taking orders, okay.
This is obviously when the city sends all their people down to get coffee, right? This new one's gonna be closer, isn't it?
The elementary school people from Western Sky.
One o'clock, there's ten. Two o'clock, the number totals sixteen again, as the, as the high. Just a couple more here. Three PM, got ten cars. Four PM, six. Five PM, eight. Six PM, five. So like I said from the beginning, the store was, wasn't quite designed in the beginning to anticipate what it is today. And so this site, we really put a whole lot of thought into it. We really created a whole new prototype, which is really cool. So I know you guys maybe saw this earlier. So we created stacking, showing here twenty-two cars. Each car represents a nineteen-foot box with a gap still for the next car, so a full-size truck, like a two thousand seventeen Chevy Silverado, would be around nineteen feet, two inches. So these don't represent like a fifteen-foot car or anything, these are, these are decent-sized, more SUV shape. So as we designed it, the building grew approximately twenty-five, or thirty to thirty-five percent bigger than the first Goodyear store, which gives us the ability to have double the equipment. So the equipment package is doubled, and what makes such a big difference with that is if you're gonna, you know, if we have to do a lot of hand-blended drinks, it takes a lot of time, but if we have enough heavy-duty equipment that has machines that already have it blended, and it's already ready to go, and you just have to pour it versus putting it in a blender, starting a blender, cleaning a blender, and making one at a time, those are the kinds of efficiencies that really make us a whole lot faster. We added a, a payment booth, which is pretty hard to see, but it's located right there. It's like a little toll booth that matches the exterior of the building, and it's located six cars back, so if you'd go to In-N-Out Burger, you might notice that the back of the building has third car back. You could pay there, so you could have taken your order prior to that, paid there, and then picked up. So our order takers are actually gonna be located around, around this region, that actually has a couple shade structures out there for them to be shaded where they take orders. And then, so if they take their order, and if they take payment, six cars back, it ensures us that there'll be no hang-up. For instance, if, if we were only three cars back on the payment, the two cars in front of them could have left. Now we're waiting for the person to pay to then move forward. So what's neat about this is it's a six-car distance, which enables never to be really a gap between the person that's picking up their drink versus the person that's paying. So those, those are some of the biggest changes that we've made. We've pretty much taken every area of the business and designed this in every way to maximize and accommodate for any, any challenges that we saw at the first store, and we're really excited to have the ability to have another store in Goodyear. The, the last, I think, topic that's important to us with this site is that we could average anywhere from, you know, approximately a minute fifteen to a minute forty-five per car at the current store, given its current conditions, but we have stores in the system, some of the busiest stores in the system that have time trackers that can see cars coming in and out at forty-two seconds per car for a daily average for the whole morning, or fifty-two seconds in the afternoon out of all the cars, and I do have data on that if you want to see it. So what that really shows is better systems, better equipment packages, better operations can really do a big difference. So, so even though I showed you an example of the first Goodyear store, and then comparatively, the numbers that I rattled off from, the numbers that I rattle off from all those photos, these were, this represented how many cars in each one of those photos total. This represents the queuing capacity for the new store, and this represents how many additional spaces we could still fit cars, and this represented how many, on average, were in line at a given time that that photo was taken, how many, this number doesn't change, and then this number is how many, on average, given that data, we would have available for people to still go in. But it doesn't account for if we were faster, and so that's one of the most exciting parts about doing this new store as a better prototype, is that these numbers could be even better. Do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I do. The, the lot next to it, that parcel, you're, you're also buying that, okay? And here's, here's my thought. That Dutch Brothers down there on Indian School and Litchfield, if I was a business owner, I would be so mad. You go in to get your nails done, or you go in to get a slice of pizza, you cannot get a parking space. And I'm wondering what kind of thoughts you have about that lot next to you. Is that gonna be a similar, similar kind of issue with all these people? I mean, good for you that you're so successful, but, you know, that's my, that's my scare, because I see that line all the time, and it's going around the corner, and it's, it's blocking everything, and it's very difficult for those people, those business people. They're furious. So, do you have any thoughts?
Yes.
You have any thoughts?
I have one thought, you know that Bill has a thought, too. First thought, that's pretty cool, is the, the manager for the neighborhood Walmart that's right beside us, she approached us not too long after we opened, a year, two years into it, and said, "Our sales are noticeably different the day that you opened." And I know that they've won some awards for their, for their sales for that neighborhood Walmart and their business, and she would always attribute it, attribute it to us and how things had taken a big change since the day that we got there. You know, when we, when I showed you that first version of that site plan at Goodyear, how it wasn't satisfying, because, you know, it wasn't something that we could predict, then we, you know, we changed it so that we would do whatever it takes to make the neighbors happy.
Right.
And I still have some more thoughts and some things that we want to do to that site to make it even better, because my goal is never to impact another.
I'm thinking, well, the complaints that I get are from the little people.
Yeah.
You know, like the, there's a pizza guy there, and then there's the nail place. It's not the Walmarts. They can take care of themselves.
Yes.
You know, it's the little guys, and, and I'm just thinking that, I'm hoping that you're thinking ahead, because this does draw a huge gap, you know? And I'm just thinking about what you're gonna put, what's gonna be that, in that other lot, so that we don't have to, you know, worry about that and hear the complaints about that.
Absolutely, and we'll definitely be, you know, open before they will, we're on track to be on a much quicker pace, so they will, I think, have a realistic picture of what things look like, and given that the lot is so huge, it's a seventy-three thousand square foot lot.
I mean, it looks huge.
It can be very self-contained onto, if anything, maybe blocking one of our parking spaces, not all the way over to where their customers are, but your concerns, I really appreciate, because that's my goal. That's been my goal since the beginning of designing this, is that this is gonna be a blessing, not hindrance to anybody. And I think, Bill.
Okay. Do we have any more questions for the applicant? Yeah, your, your original one is in my neighborhood, and the lines get long, but my children love to go down there and get some movies. Okay, in that case, thank you very much for your presentation, and I will ask if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter. We do not have any... speaker cards. So, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the commission up to discussion on this item. Is there any discussion? Discussion on the right, okay. In that case, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 17-300-00002, subject to the stipulations in the staff report.
I second.
It has been properly moved and seconded, 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 whatever, that to approve this motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the motion passes. Now, we will move to what was originally item 8.2, and Katie will present to us.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the commission. Before you is a proposal to amend the Goodyear zoning ordinance regarding large retail users. Large retail users are also known as big-box stores, large grocery stores, Walmarts, Targets, those type of stores. Currently, our zoning ordinance requires these type of uses to go through a special-use permit process, similar to the drive-throughs that you just heard. So, that requires approximately about 112-day process to go through all the citizen meetings, public hearings before this board and the city council. The Goodyear general plan gives us the direction to advance economic opportunity and create diverse destinations. The city council strategic action plan also gives us the direction to streamline our development process. We've presented to you before and some of the things we're doing, but opportunities to reduce 112-day process for potential businesses is certainly an opportunity we wanted to bring to you. There are many design requirements in the zoning ordinance for these users, such as limiting the location of them, making sure that they are on appropriately-sized parcel. You know, a commercial area that's more tucked into a residential area isn't appropriate for a big-box store, but larger commercial areas along freeways, along arterial roadways, are appropriate. There's also regulations about breaking up parking lots, since they typically have larger parking lots with pedestrian walkways to make them safer. But all these regulations are already in the zoning ordinance. And so, staff can administer those through the site plan process, which is an administrative process, which, by the way, they have to go through even through the special-use permit. They go through the special-use permit, then they go through the site plan process. So, there's a double process there. We haven't seen a large retail user come through for nine years, so I don't really have recent information to give you on how Commissioner, Council, or the public has responded to these recently. However, as I said, we point to the general plan, and we point to our strategic action plan, and also what we hear from our community, that they want shopping opportunities, they want regional shopping. So, we do think it's in the best interest of the community to try and streamline this process by removing the special-use permit requirement, but keeping those design guidelines, so that we recognize that a big-box does have different design challenges than other types of stores. So, we would recommend keeping those in place, but staff can review those during the site plan and administer those during the administrative site plan process. We did post this on our website, and we did a display ad regarding the zoning text amendment in accordance with state law. And we have not received any objections to the state. So, at this point, I'd conclude my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions. We also have Michelle Laurie, our Economic Development Director here, who can answer questions you may have.
Katie, do we have any questions for Katie? No questions? Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to address? You are the applicant, so. Is there anyone in the audience? I do have one speaker card from Mark Pelletier. Is that correct?
Pelletier.
Okay, Pelletier. I took a whole semester of French, so.
Can I have a second to start my timer here?
Please state your name and address.
My name's Mark Pelletier. I live at 15742 West Fairmont in Goodyear. I have to be honest with you. My reading of this proposal was both concerning and seemingly counterintuitive, okay? I don't find any rationale in the documentation for this, other than possibly the implied rationale that, gee, no big boxes have applied since 2008, so it must be our restrictive requirements. Well, I will remind you that the economy crashed in 2008. It arguably has not recovered, and we all know that retail is diminishing. Sorry, I'm lost in a train of thought here. It's concerning to me that this seems to be, the goal here seems to be, make it easier for the most impactful developments. I know Goodyear has been striving for years to try to be more business-friendly, and we want these businesses. But making the changes that are recommended here for big-box people, what does that say to Dutch Brothers and Refinery Church that just got approved, and even the people who got deferred from today with the others? What does that say to the little guy? You know, is it so onerous to go through 112 days for a Winco, or a Walmart, or whomever, that we have to change it for them, but it's okay for Dutch Brothers, who is no longer here, to have to go through 112 days? Winco purchased that property on December 19th, 2014, which by my calculator is 908 days ago. And indeed, their interest preceded that. So, I don't see a big encumbrance for that. Sorry, I had one more thought. It just seems like the very people we should not be lessening our restrictions and regulations on are those that have the biggest impact. A large retailer, large footprint, large parking, large traffic. Additionally, reading this proposal, it not only removes the requirement for the use permit, it removes the requirement for a traffic study. Now, these guys came in with 22 cars, and they had to do a traffic study for their use permit. Why does a Winco with hundreds of cars in their parking lot not have to do that? Additionally, it strikes something in there about requirements or restrictions on the height of parking lot lighting. What does that have to do with anything? I'll leave you with a question. Do we make rules and regulations to guide what we want for our community, or do we make them simply to make it easier to comply? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the audience? There is no one else in the audience, unless our Economic Development Director would like to speak. But, very good. Any more questions for the app? Well, you are the applicant. Any more questions for staff? Go ahead.
Katie, would you like to address the points that Mr. Pelletier raised, Pelletier? I think we should consider those.
Thank you, Chairman Barnes, Commissioner Walters. I appreciate especially a couple of those comments, because I was negligent in my presentation to tell you about some of the changes, and also in the information we posted on the website. So, I think we can revise that and do a better job. There were two items, regulations, that we did modify. We took out the requirement for a traffic study, and that's because that requirement sits in our engineering design standards and policy manual. So, a large retail user will have to do a traffic study, as all uses have to do with the site plan. We took it out of the zoning ordinance, because we found in the past that having duplicate regulations in two places can cause confusion. If you change the rules in one place, you forget to do it in another. The engineering design standards is what regulates the traffic studies, so that's the appropriate place for it. We did also remove the requirement for the lighting, and that's because the large retail user regulations were adopted in 2004, before we had a lighting ordinance. We then adopted Article 10, our outdoor lighting standards, which include the same exact regulations that are in the large retail user. So, we struck those for, again, the same reason. They were duplicate information, and that creates potential for having problems when you have duplicate information. The outdoor lighting standards are mostly based on proximity to residential, not necessarily the user itself. So, any use that's within certain proximities to residential has limitations on the height and brightness of lights. And those regulations will apply to large retail users and are covered in Article 10 of the zoning ordinance.
But will this make big-box, will this make the process easier for big-box developers relative to others not covered by this change?
Thank you. To address that portion, it will make development easier for big-box developers. That's the purpose of trying to remove this requirement. That's absolutely true. There are some types of uses that still require a use permit, such as drive-through uses. And at least staff is looking at all of these uses to tackle next of what other uses can we help the development process through that maybe don't make sense to have a use permit. And so, we would look to all of you to find out if you have any opinions on where we should be looking next to ease the development process for those types of users that we want to see in Goodyear, and that maybe the public process doesn't add a lot of value, because there's just not a lot of public coming out onto it. So, that would be my response to that, that we want to try and make development easier for everybody.
Thank you, Katie.
So, just as a point of clarification, then, while the subject is large retail users, but the requirements for the lighting and this stuff to be in the engineering plan and all the duplication, isn't it the same duplication as it would be for other retailers? Not just large retail users?
Thank you. The lighting requirements are the same for everybody, and all types of users require traffic impact study, too. But there are special regulations for large retail users, such as 1% of the site area has to be used for pedestrian areas. There's requirements of, there's additional requirements for how much landscaping you put in the parking lot, and how often you put pedestrian walkways in the parking lot. There's additional requirements above and beyond on the building, and how often you add articulation to the building that for smaller buildings aren't required. So, there are additional design.
Differentiation between, okay.
And along with the siting, you can only cite a large retail user on a 10-acre piece of property, where a smaller business can go on any size property that's zoned commercial. And then it also has to be located on the intersection of arterials, or next to a freeway, or similar types of locations.
Katie, can you tell us how this compares to other cities in the valley?
To be honest, we didn't do that research.
Okay.
We can do that research, if you wish, and provide that to you.
I personally don't know of any cities that require a special-use permit for big-box, but I don't have all the cities zoning ordinance memorized, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just contribute to some of what Katie said. Actually, what we're, and I agree 1,000% with what Katie said, but what we're trying to do is make larger retail users have a very similar process to the smaller retail users, because right now, we treat the bigger ones differently. So, we're trying to put, yeah, we're trying to make them, put them on an equal playing field, if you will. 112-day working day, by the way, addition to an approval process, is quite an extensive expansion of a calendar of construction, of investment, and things of that nature for projects. I very much appreciate Mr. Pelletier's comments, his thoughtfulness and his eloquence. It's evident he gave a lot of thought to it, and I certainly appreciate that. One of the things, as you've heard us report before on our process improvements, is we are going through our ordinances, our approval processes, and things of that nature, and really seeking to improve our ability to deliver the products that this product, meaning the built environment, and retail, and housing diversity, that the citizens and the council and so forth are asking for, and the general plan calls for, in the most efficient way possible. And by no means does that mean that we are changing our standards. We're just simply adjusting the process by which a project can earn approval. And that's really the premise of this whole proposal that's before you tonight.
Correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is, things that require a special-use permit, such as liquor stores, drive-throughs, things like that, are things that the zoning cannot particularly anticipate. But a big-box store is something that, if a big-box store can go in that parcel, zoning has already basically created that parcel for something like a big-box. So, it's not a surprise, is my understanding, that we've anticipated what's gonna come with a big-box store versus, you know, when a drive-through grows in, we can't always anticipate that. So, we need a special-use permit so that we can look at it closer.
Thank you, Chairman. That's exactly right. There's basically three types of uses. There's permitted uses. So, you know, retail's a permitted use and commercial. Any commercial area makes sense for retail. There's uses that are permitted with conditions. So, they're permitted, they don't have to go through any public process, but they might have additional conditions, such as payday loan stores have to be separated from other payday loan stores. So, that's a condition of their approval, but they don't need to go through a public process just to make sure they're separated. And then there's types of uses that go through a use permit or special-use permit. And basically, what's that saying is, we don't know what those conditions are until we know what the site is. We don't know what hours of operations restrictions you need. We don't know what type of queuing lanes you need until we know which business you are. And that's where, you know, I think Chairman is right, that because of the regulations that's set out, it is more predictable. If you're going on the right type of site, it's in the right type of location, you adhere to these guidelines. We know what those restrictions should be.
Thank you very much. Any more discussion from the commission? Very well, I will, I already closed the public hearing. Did I remember to close the public hearing? I'm closing the public hearing. Can I have a motion from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve case number 17-220-00003, zoning ordinance text amendment to remove the requirement for large retail users to obtain a special-use permit.
I second.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we approve this item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the motion passes. Thank you very much to everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, we did 8.5. Item 8.6, Katie did that. Okay, 8.7. Was that covered in the one you just did, or do we have another item?
No, the last two items have just been postponed. We don't need you to take any action. We'll renotice them when they're ready to come back.
Right, okay. Then item 9, Steph, communications. Do we have any communications from our staff?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commission, thank you for your participation tonight and so forth. We had a lot of guests tonight, and I appreciate your indulgence and the diligence by which you conducted the public hearing. And thank you for your effort in that regard. Just to update you on a couple of the cases, as I do every month, in terms of the council actions, of what you, in cases that you made a recommendation on, or this body made a recommendation on. On the refinery church special-use permit that went, which is located east of 303, south of Indian School, if you recall that particular case, went to the city council on June 5th, and was approved. Likewise, the use permit for the convenience use for Panera Bread located on Pebble Creek Parkway, that also was on the June 5th planning commission, excuse me, city council agenda, and was also approved. The signed ordinance, which you all have recommended, is going to the city council on June 26th for consideration. So, they have not yet held their public hearing or made their final decision on that, but it is calendared for the June 26th meeting agenda. And then the revision to the LCEDRO PAD that you... And then the revision to the El Cidro PAD that you all recommended approval, the council did, in fact, approve that on June 5th as well. Just in terms of what's going on council-wise, we had, or the council had inauguration on this past Monday. So there's a new council member. Mr. Councilmember Brandon Hampton was seated. And former council member Sherilyn Holman is no longer on the city council. But we're excited to, we appreciate her service, obviously, and look forward to working with Councilmember Hampton. Other than that, I don't think I have anything additional. Oh, I'm sorry, Katie, do you?
I have one item. We did receive notice that Commissioner Shelley Milton has resigned from the commission. So we currently have a vacancy on the commission. We've advertised for applicants, and I believe the goal is to try and get a new member appointed before our city council goes on break for the summer. So hopefully, we'd have a new member for our August meeting. But I believe we will not have somebody for our July meeting yet.
When our applications do?
That's a very good question.
Is there still time?
I would say yes. Just send it in. Those applications go to the city clerk, and they vet those and so on and so forth. So I apologize, I don't know the exact cutoff time. But I know they're actively working on those, and the council subcommittee is, will be meeting in the very, very short term. So if there is somebody that's interested, encourage them to make their application and put expedited up at the top.
Okay. Is that it from the staff?
Yes, sir, that's it. Thank you very much.
There being no further business to discuss, this meeting is adjourned.